Okay, and I want to say how grateful I am to get to hear this jackhammer.
Yeah.
Because that means that we as a city have the capacity to fix problems when they occur. And for that, I am deeply grateful. And as a migraine sufferer, I am really grateful I don't have a migraine today. So all things are pointing up, y'all. So today, we have firefighter Alan Green with us as part of a two-part public safety update. When he heard us discussing the fact from Chief Hyman that we had seen some house fires increasing, this council, myself included, asked some questions about, hey, what's going on with that? That's weird. And so he actually had been doing some research already on that and doing some education, I think, around it.
Yes.
So wanted to invite him to come and share with us about that. So now that I do have a quorum, can I get a motion on the minutes from our previous meeting?
Second.
All right, we have motion and proper seconds, so the minutes will stand without objection. All right, take it away.
Well, again, I appreciate y'all for allowing me to come and speak today. I am Alan Green. If you haven't met me, you probably have heard about me or seen me in school, on TV, talking a lot about fire prevention and education. That's pretty much my big thing. So before I get started, I like to always kind of give a brief overview of my why. Why I do something, why it's important to me. So about a little over three years ago, before I got this position, I was sitting in an interview with the chiefs. And two questions that stood out was, one of them was, what rewards are you looking for with this position? And the other one was, what challenges are you looking for? And my response to what rewards was, I'm not looking for any rewards. I had plenty of rewards, accolades from the things I do in my personal life before I was even applying for this position. I said the reward would be for firefighters to go home every day. Also, for our community to be more safer. That would be the rewards that I would be looking for. Now, the challenges, I said the challenges is not going to be for me. The challenge is going to be for the whole department. It's not a me, it's a we. And what I mean by that is to see our department be more engaged and involved in the community, which we have done that tremendously. And also to give back more to the community. I like to put it this way, put the community back in community fire department and put the fire department back in the community. You know, a lot of people don't understand that, but I think we do a great job of that, have been doing for a long time. But those were my two questions that always stood out. And that's my why to fire and life safety education, fire prevention, why this is really, really important to me to serve and make sure our community is more safe. So with that said, again, I'm Alan Green. I'm the Fire Life Safety Educator for the Tennessee Fire Department. I'm also the Community Risk Reduction and Community Outreach Chair for the International Association of Black Professional Firefighters. So the things I do is not just locally, it's at state, national level, a little bit at international level as well. So community risk reduction. I know these terms have been coming up a lot lately. And it's, to me, it's kind of sad that it's not as prevalent in Chattanooga as it is around the country with other fire departments. And some of my colleagues that I speak to on the regular about what is community risk reduction. Some of them have divisions, some of them don't. Some of them are working towards having community risk reduction divisions, especially as a coordinator. So what community risk reduction is, is a strategic proactive approach that aims to prioritize risk within the community. Then you implement those strategies to mitigate or prevent those risks. Big part of this statement here, it moves past traditional fire prevention. It's not traditional, meaning we're looking at a broader range of potential hazards, natural disasters, public health issues, and other safety concerns. So when people ask you, well, what does the fire department have to do with youth gun violence? That's a public health issue. We are mentors, we're fathers, we're uncles, we're cousins, mothers. We have a lot to do with public health issues when it comes down to those areas. So in a nutshell, that's what community risk reduction is. Now, an assessment to a plan. First, we start with a community risk reduction assessment. What that is, is we will look in the community, boots to the ground. It's not one of those situations where you can sit behind the desk and figure out what's going on. You have to get out there, talk to people, interact, engage, really listen to the community partners of what's going on. And then they will help you identify what those risks are. Then you identify the risks within that community to enhance safety and preparedness. Focus is on understanding hazards vulnerabilities and the capability of the community to respond effectively. As you all know, we're looking at that right now with the floods, right? So we will conduct an assessment. With that assessment, we would devise a plan, which would be the community risk reduction plan. Same thing, we will identify and mitigate the risk to enhance safety and resilience within the community. Resilience meaning the ability to recover. We ain't at now, how we going to recover from what just happened? What are our measures that we going to put in place? It's a strategic framework used by local governments, emergency services, and community organizations. Not just local governments, but at the state level, we have a state representative who is the community risk reduction coordinator for the whole state of Tennessee. At the national level, you know, when you think about FEMA, they do community risk reduction all the time. So it's not just local government. Now, a community risk reduction assessment or a community risk reduction plan means nothing if we don't put that plan into action. And the people I work with, as you see them in their class B's, the real firefighters, as I like to say, those are the people that come off shift and work with myself and some other firefighters to get this in action, to turn this plan into action. And that's what we're trying to do now when we start looking at data and what's going on in our community. The community risk reduction plans, these are the six core components of what a community risk reduction plan is going to require. These are the steps. Step one, you got to identify the risks. Prioritize those risks, develop strategies and tactics to mitigate those risks, prepare the community risk reduction plan, implement the community risk reduction plan, monitor, evaluate, and modify the plan as you see fit. This is not an overnight thing. You know how they say you don't turn a battleship around? In one turn, it don't happen. So we are looking at data that may take a year, two years, three years to really get it done. Some of it may take a little less depending on what the risks are and what we trying to change and modify. The five Es of CRR, these would pretty much be considered our strategies and tactics that we use. We would take one or maybe all five of these five Es and figure out a way to implement them in the plan. We may not use all of them, we may use one. Right now, we lean heavily on education, heavy. We do know we can always do education. That's what we do 365, sometimes 366 days out the year. In my field, I like to say education is the foundation to prevention. You don't believe me? Look it up. So on the other end, with emergency response, that's what we do in the fire department, probably eighty to ninety percent of the time. We own the emergency response. We've been responsive, we've been reactive because we don't always know what's going to happen. I'm under the Fire Prevention Bureau, so I work to get on the front end. And with CRR, we like to say getting ahead of the call. And that's what we trying to get more into, is getting ahead so we don't have to be so much on the other end of being responsive, which we know we'll never stop being, you know, emergency responsive, never. But these are the five Es that we try to implement within the plan. Tell me if I'm going too fast.
No, you're free.
All right. Now, this is the unofficial E of community risk reduction. It has not been adopted yet, but I like the brain itself. I use it a lot in my presentations with elementary school kids all the way up to senior citizens. They don't change, pretty much. I don't want to come, even here in this meeting, have a conversation with you all if we don't do anything about it. Then we not being empowered at all. Even people that's out there in TV world that's watching online, it does me no good to have this conversation if I don't leave here and feel like somebody's going to do something about it. We did a fire safety training at UTC for the RAs last week. And I was a bit skeptical at first because I said, these are a lot of kids that know a lot about everything or a lot about nothing. Forgive me, please. But when we left, I felt really good because they asked questions, they were really engaged. And you know how that population can be. They let me know they was empowering, they feel empowered. They going to go tell somebody, do something about it. And this is my saying, and I probably going to coin it, information without application is just a conversation. I don't like going places just to have a conversation. I need some application if I'm going to give you some information. So that's what the empowerment is, is to focus on enhancing the capacity of individuals and groups to actively participate in decision-making processes to affect their lives and environments. That's what essentially we try to do, you all, every single Tuesday and in between, right? Sometimes it don't work out, but we try to earn it out. So that's the empowerment E. Now, this slide here, I'm not even, I'm going to ask the question in a way. What is the number one reason we run residential structure fires?
Cooking fires.
Thank you, thank you. I gave you the answer. So that is correct. And that is not me making that up. That is not me putting that on there just to put it on there. That is correct. And that's just not a Chattanooga factor that is across the country. But the U.S. Fire Administration has identified cooking as the leading cause of residential building fires or fires in structures.
Makes sense.
That is it. And this is going to shock you all because it shocked me when I found out this next part. So I don't know. We sat down a little, probably about two years ago with the State Fire Marshal Office, Jay Westbrook. At that time, Jay was the Community Risk Reduction Coordinator for the state of Tennessee. So somehow, he got in touch with our department and said, hey, I would like to come down and talk to y'all about your community risk reduction assessment. So knowing what I know, what I love, and what I'm passionate about, I said, that's fine with me. Never heard of Jay, never had much interaction with the State Fire Marshal's office. But I said, let's do it. So he came down a couple times, and we sat in a comfort room and talked. He said, this is what I have. The national average at that time was for cooking fires was twenty-two percent.
Of twenty-two percent of what?
Twenty-two percent cooking.
Of total fires?
Uh huh, cooking fires. Residential fires, twenty-two percent was accounted to cooking fires.
Okay.
So we were at sixteen percent. Sixteen percent. And I said, wow, that's a huge number. I said, something's going wrong with Chattanooga. It must be we can't cook, I don't know. I don't know what it was due to, but...
But we were less, we were sixteen percent?
But the national average was twenty-two.
So the national average was higher.
It was higher, but we led the state.
Oh, okay, led the state.
So, and I've been, I want to get those numbers, show you all. But that's what stuck out in my head when Jay said, this is why it's important to do a community risk reduction assessment and buy into what we're trying to do at the state level. So when I got those numbers from Jay and we talked about it, he sat there and said, now that you have this information, we need somebody to champion this. Who's going to be the champion? Who's going to lead the charge to get this done? And I was sitting there because I was with two or three captains. So I sat there, I said, I'm going to be quiet. I'm a firefighter, so let me sit back and see how this go. But lo and behold, your passion will always override what you don't want to do. So that's how I ended up going this route, really, really digging into community risk reduction. So with that assessment, we really didn't move forward at that point with Jay because we didn't have the staffing forward. So it was myself at that point with, well, it was Aldo, but he was out of the company at that point on IOD, was helping me out a lot. So we went from two people helping out to several people, as you can see in the room now, trying to get it done. So we wasn't really effective in trying to implement the plan. So I had to go back recently and start looking and say, hey, I really want to try to get this done. I really would like to see us develop a community risk reduction plan and put it into action. So this is just some numbers I looked up. From 2023, we had 222 fires in structures. Forty-two of those fires in 2023 was cooking fires. Eighteen point nine two percent of fires. In 2024, we had 304 fires in structures. Seventy-three of those fires was cooking fires. That's twenty-four point zero percent. Now, I don't want to look too much at the percentages, but looking at the numbers and the increase in the fires. And the cooking fires, both went up. That's important for us to know that. And I think as I look right now, we're probably, when Chief Hyman was here, he showed that in 2025, we was at 422 cooking fires. Not cooking fires, but fires in structures. I don't know if y'all remember that part, but that stuck out to me as I started looking at the numbers. So that was just a brief overview of the community risk reduction assessment that we conducted. Now, looking at the cooking fires by zip codes, which prompted me to reach out to my new good friend here, Councilwoman Byrd's, for 37421. But we look at all zip codes on this screen for the year 2023. You can see in 37421, they had a, looked like about thirteen cooking fires. Then 2024, they had twelve cooking fires. Yeah, it went down a little bit, but it was still relatively high, right? And we can look at some other zip codes and see what's going on. If there's an upward trend or a downward trend. And those are things that my team and myself will start looking at after today to try to figure out, okay, which direction do we want to go? Truly and honestly, what makes the most sense to start really hammering down on.
Up in almost every district, every zip.
From the crowd here. So I don't know who doing, who not cooking right in the dish.
Our people don't know how to cook, apparently.
Y'all need to get together and figure that out.
Okay, so for...
Mine in Hurst District.
Yeah, East Brainerd, Tynor, anything past Leek Highway.
I will.
Because I'm trying to see what district it is. She said, we burning it up.
Y'all burning it up too.
That's what she said, I didn't see that.
I mean, it's interesting, and it goes up in almost every zip, or if not every zip.
From the prior year. Yeah, so that's interesting. It's really interesting, as you can see, from '23 to '24, it did go up. It did. And so for us and the team that we're trying to, what we're trying to do in the fire department, we really trying to dig into these numbers and see why it went up. What's the why? We know there's a problem, we know that. But we didn't know why there's a problem. Get to the root of why. You know, why are these numbers going up? That way, we can devise a plan if it's under-tended cooking or people coming home after work at night cooking. Then we start putting out different messages and say, okay, don't cook at night or don't cook when you sleep. Pay attention to what you cooking, keep an eye on what you fry. Those types of messages, what we develop. But we don't want to just develop a cookie cutter plan and that's not what's going on, what's causing these fires. That's a bad deal, bad deal. So that's why I say it takes time to really figure out how we going to do this. Now, I'd like to pick on y'all too, Councilman Harvey, Councilwoman Byrd, okay? It's just an example, everybody good with that?
That's all right.
All right, don't get on to me when I leave. So 37421 for the last two years had the highest number of cooking fires. Forty-two cooking fires in Chattanooga was the total number. Fourteen of those fires, cooking fires, was in the 37421 zip code. But then going down to 2024, seventy-three total cooking fires in Chattanooga. Seventy-three. Twelve of those were in 37421. So again, I know the numbers went down a little bit in 37421, but they were still the highest out of all the other zip codes. And we just about doubled in cooking fires. Now, again, we will have to go back and look at the data, read reports, and figure out, okay, what really happened. Because this don't tell the whole story. But I want to give you all something to really think about and say, okay, something's going on. But they are working on it, they are trying to get something done.
Does this include like outdoor grilling type fires or is this strictly in the house kitchen?
This is strictly in structures.
Oh.
In structures, yes, sir, in structures, fires in structures.
I just tried to put it on grills over here, man.
No, then you people get the grills off the porch too, please.
Don't judge us.
I'm not judging nobody, I'm just saying, I ride through everybody that is here.
I figured it was the grills on the porch.
I'm going to do some door knocking. If I see a grill on the porch and it look like it's been, we going to do some talking. So with that said, when we look at the assessment, you know, it's safe to say, well, what's the plan? We know there's a problem. And for me, I don't like being brought problems with no solutions, right? I know it's a problem. But how we get to the plan? How do we put that plan in action? So what's the plan? Chattanooga Fire Department Community Risk Reduction Plan. We have already identified what the risks are. So we working, we trying to put it, actually, we putting it in action because we identified the plan, we have prioritized the risks. And now, what my team and myself and the fire department, what we're going to do is we're going to develop strategies and tactics to mitigate those risks. And it's going to take a huge collaboration to everybody put their minds together. It's not an Alan Green thing, it's not. So please, understand that that's not what I'm trying to project or convey that message, that this is just me, all about me. It's not. It's a team, it's us working together. It's going to be a lot of people sitting down, figuring it out, and exchanging ideals. So that's the plan here. Next step is going to be the strategies and tactics to mitigate those risks. Then we'll prepare the community risk reduction plan and then implement that community risk reduction plan, monitor, evaluate, and modify as we see fit. And we would definitely keep y'all up to date on where we are in our metrics and what we're doing. Now, out of the whole presentation, this is probably my favorite one, this right here. So this is my good friend, I like to say my other mother, and she's aware that I was going to show this today, Ms. Carrie Harris. And I told her, she said, well, I'm glad you told me because I didn't want to be shocked when everybody in my neighborhood called me and say, I saw you on YouTube. I didn't want her mad at me. She gave me a Father's Day card and I need another one, so I... But anyway, this is our community risk reduction in action.
...turned to the Chattanooga Fire Department when she needed help getting fresh batteries for the smoke alarm in her Woodmore home.
I had knee surgery. And there's things about knee surgery that you can't get on ladders and things anymore. And I didn't have anybody else to do it for me.
Senior firefighter Alan Green, the CFD's Fire and Life Safety Educator, brought over batteries for the smoke alarm near her bedrooms and added two additional devices right outside her kitchen for more protection. In a matter of days, the smoke alarms did their job. Harris and her daughter were sleeping when she heard them going off.
I lit a candle in my kitchen, you know, just wanted to make sure that the house smelled good. Okay. Twelve hours later the next morning, I just thought it was my alarm system, but it wasn't, it was the fire alarm. Went off, and I had a fire going in my kitchen where the candle was not put out completely. I just took everything, threw it in the sink. And when I threw it in the sink and burned one on it, the blaze started. So I just taken the cloth and just covered it up. And I was so thankful that I was able to save my life and my daughter's life because if not, we would have been, the apartment, the house completely destroyed.
Now Ms. Harris is urging citizens to make sure they have functioning smoke alarms.
We need to be safe. If we're not safe, we may as well forget it. And I wouldn't ever think that they were going to come in and just put a battery in and look at the results of what happened. And I am so thankful to the fire department.
Can I start by taking it only?
Okay.
So that is the essence in the crux of the matter. You know, when I answered those questions almost three, over three years ago, what would be the challenges and the rewards? And I say that's proof of what we set out to do, is make our community safe. Something simple as replacing a battery. And she arguing me up and down about that because she didn't want it right there in the place I put it, right outside. Now they put it in the kitchen. But I said, I would suggest to go right here and say, okay, okay, all right. And she called me two, three days later, a week later and said, thank you. But that is what we try to do, is make our community safe at the heart of everything. And it takes a lot to do that. And, you know, I was grateful even just for this position. I was talking with the team yesterday. And I heard it in the sermon about you got careers and you got callings, right? Which one are you operating in, a career or a calling? Some of us, we have no choice but to be in the career. But I've been fortunate and blessed enough to operate in duality. My career is my calling, you know? Every day I come to work, I don't feel like I'm coming to work. I feel like I'm coming to a calling because that's who I am through and through. And I enjoy it with the little kids that just rightly nose on me and cry on me and the same city that talk to me about their daughters and ask me if I'm married, you know, I enjoy it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from council before we start handing out tender codes here?
No, 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 no.
No, he's a married man.
No, 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 that's not it. So any questions, no codes.
We've got Councilwoman Dolly and then Councilwoman Byrd.
First, thank you for the work that you do. I appreciate all the work that you all do. And this is the kind of prevention side of it that we really like. So my question, you mentioned earlier that the firefighters that work with you, they work outside of their regular fire hours, is that what you were saying?
Yes.
Are they volunteering?
No, no, no. We've been blessed to be able to, we call it special assignment.
Okay.
Compensation.
Okay, special assignment, okay.
But now, they don't even think about the money, really.
Right, right.
I had to force it on them.
Well, we appreciate their service as well. So it was that, and then if you could email us the presentation.
Okay.
Okay, that's it, thank you, ma'am, sure.
And you can send that to Nicole, Gwen, or Bert and Gwen, and she'll get it to us. Councilwoman Byrd.
In one of the slides, you mentioned the economic incentives, you know, for communities to get involved with what your action is going to be. Is there grant funding, like through the state or national organizations to help fund some of that stuff? Once you get to that point, I'm just trying to think ahead that when you all come up with an action plan, where that funding might come from? And are there opportunities that you're aware of?
So grants, they come out every so often at the national level. And we are working with Mary Kay Appi at, with the National Fire, U.S. Fire Academy Administration. And what she has done for us in the past were smoke alarms.
I've been a part of that before, when you went house to house.
Yeah, so she will apply for these grants based off the work that we're doing and programs. So right now, we are running, we're trying to gear up for the Sound Off program. And it's a three-day educational program targeted for second and third graders. So with that said, we would do three days in elementary school for three different lessons that build on each other. And we give free smoke alarms to install in the homes of the participants. So those are the type of grants that she will work on and she will intentionally and strategically identify departments that's doing the work in the communities in regards to that specific program. Now, there are other organizations that we partner with where they may say we're doing the Climate for Safety program. And what that is, is they try to get money and grants to buy fire window escape ladders. And then they will hand those out as part of the community outreach and fire life safety education and events like that. So there are grants out there that come across every so often. And I'm in a cohort network that they send a bunch of information through to me and say, hey, do you all know about this, do you all know about that? So that's why I go to a lot of conferences around community risk reduction and fire life safety education because that's where I can get the information that you're asking about and bring it back like, hey, I heard about smart burners. They got grants for smart burners to help control cooking fires. That answer your question?
Yeah, because I think it's important that that doesn't become prohibitive once you've got your action plan ready to go, that it's not held back because, you know, we don't have the funding to do it. And I know that as tight as, you know, everybody's talking about funding these days. So I think it's important to have a plan so when you're ready to go out in the community and say, this is what we want to do to reduce the fires, that you've got some resources either in the works or already on hand to be able to do it. It doesn't hold you back. And then the other question I have is, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. When you respond to, where somebody responds to a fire, you all have to document what the cause of the fire is. So that's where you're able to take, go back and take that information and segment it into, it was in the kitchen and they were cooking whatever and the grease caught the fire. So you're able to really narrow it down with some extra time, some man or woman power, narrowing it down to say, these are the highest incident, whether it's grease fire or whatever.
And so that is correct. So I don't really look, I don't look at the reports. And that's why, like now, we're going to take time to go back and read the reports so we can wrap our head around, okay, this was a kitchen fire contained to a pan or a pot.
Okay.
Or this was a cooking fire that was due to grease splattering out. Or this was a cooking fire that was due to grease splattering out. Uh, and we're actually going to transition to a new system. Come, I think, January Chief, the new system, reporting system? Yes. So we'll get a new system, Nearest, and it, it'd be easier to navigate and actually read and say, "Okay."
Sort that data?
Right, 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 right.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Thanks for all you're doing and thank you for putting this presentation together. I know Councilman Harvey and I are like, "Oh, we got to get, get to work on those houses, those kitchen fires."
Let's stop cooking.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're going to talk about the flood response next and recovery report.
Okay, well, I'm going to get out this seat because it don't feel good. Especially with you right there.
Darren, how you doing? Are you all got it? It looks like Darren's driving.
I'm going to drive today.
Welcome back to the table.
First, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
And we miss you. I am good. There we go.
So we have Darren here today to talk with us about the flood response and recovery from last week. How crazy was last week?
It was.
A week ago today.
It was. And I will tell you, it reminded me of another 12, which was April 12, 2020, when the tornado of F3 power ripped through the East Brainerd and then Hamilton in District 4-9. And it reminded me of the response of our, our city. Our first responders, our volunteers, everyone, our faith-based organizations. Once again, we're seeing that, that level of commitment from, from everyone. And I'm telling you, we're, we should be, we should be very blessed to live in the area we have with the incredible volunteers and first responders that we have. So if you will allow me, we're going to bring up department.
Great.
Uh, experts who will walk through the slides. And I'll try to move as quickly as possible. The premise of this is to provide you with kind of a quick overview, but as much data as possible. You do have these, uh, we shared these with you earlier, this presentation. So, basically, I'm going to read this slide and then we're going to move into a much faster pace.
Okay.
Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, if that's okay with you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, this presentation will cover what we knew and what we did not know, how we responded appropriately and quickly to ensure the safety of the public and the ongoing recovery efforts across departments, how hundreds of city employees responded to hundreds of calls for service and help from our neighboring governments and our people at significant but manageable expense. While there was one death within the city limits attributed to this historic event, the heroics of our first responders, police, fire, and our public works and wastewater folks can't be understated. There are lessons to be learned from this event, especially as it pertains to the ongoing I-24 work, which you all saw a lot of conversation from Mayor Kelly. And we do not have all the answers yet, but rest assured, we will get the answers and be even more responsive and effective as a city government when we face this type of event ever again. So, we are lucky to have our own meteorologist, Brian Smith. I don't have a green screen for you, Brian. I do not have a clicker. Are you going to be okay?
I'm okay. It's been a while since I done the green screen, so.
Brian, would you please tell us what happened?
Absolutely, too. And, uh, I, I just want to say real quickly too, with this, um, before getting into this, thank you, Alan, and for the hundreds of also smoke alarms that you put in. He's got Sound Alarm with Red Cross coming up as well. And I've had the pleasure of helping him out for a couple of years with that, so thank you with that. So, uh, real quickly, a couple of things that happened during the day of this really unprecedented event. A couple of things of completely caught off guard or what we knew and so forth. Uh, there was a chance of heavy rain for that particular day. Uh, there was, without going too much into the synoptic scale of this, uh, there was also a chance of heavy rain as well as isolated flash flooding. Uh, and when you look at the grand scale of everything that was set up, it wasn't too out of the normal of a, of a regular afternoon when we have, you know, pop-up thunderstorms that could drop very heavy rain at any amount of time. Uh, what made this really unusual is that when the storms were developing, they were drifting from a southwest to a northeast, uh, particular motion. And I was actually at council last Tuesday when I started following the radar and noticing that one cell that just did not want to budge. Now, I know there are a few members of the EOC that were already at the office. We'd already received a little bit of information earlier in the day from the National Weather Service, but overall, it was not a heightened alert. Uh, the threat for flash flooding was in that slight risk. There were no flood or flash flood watches that were in effect for that day from the National Weather Service. So while I wouldn't say it was a normal day, it was a little bit elevated with the chance of, uh, heavy rain, seeing something like this is of course very unprecedented. But around 5:30 or so, 5:15, I did start alerting EOC. I am, um, work for them when it comes to weather and started letting a few folks know that this cell was beginning to stall and we were already starting to have some problems. And then, of course, right after that, it just sort of escalated. To have rain rates of six to nine inches an hour is absolutely amazing. We've had tropical downpours here. We've had minor flash floods in a few areas here before. Uh, but that's about where that rain rate was. And then also to have, uh, five and a half inches in three hours is quite a bit of rain. But two, we had rain during the day earlier, so we've already had up to an inch of rain before this all started to happen and unfold. Uh, one thing that's about this particular area, you kind of see circled here, 6.52. The last time that we had anything close to that was Tropical Storm Lee. And you see here, uh, the record back in 2013. This was not associated with a tropical storm. Yes, it was tropical moisture, but it was not a land-falling hurricane or a tropical storm that moved over here. Usually when that happens, you're more or less on high alert, so. Um, and then my particular role after that is just serving as, "How much longer is the rain going to last?" I spoke with Chief Boatwright, a few other folks here from EOC, just to kind of give them an update of where that particular rain was. Also, one other sort of misconception about that particular area, it floods a lot. That area is prone because there is the South Chickamauga Creek that will rise and flood those areas. That's part of the reason why we have a golf course there. Um, however, in this particular situation, this was not a river flood. This was an unprecedented, large amount of heavy rain that all fell at one particular time. I've been there 20 years, I've been doing weather for 20 years. I've never seen anything happen like that in that area. The only other time I could think of something of this particular magnitude was in Sadi Daisy several years ago when we had almost 13 inches of rain. Um, that was maybe 10, 12 years ago. I'd look at that exact same day. So, I'm more or less here to say, very rare event. And once we saw that this was developing what it was, it's amazing the action that took place after. Um, you know, we saw this was going to be a big problem and adds off to, you know, the hundreds of people that were a part of that, so. But I'll kind of leave it at that and chain over to the next couple of slides.
All right, thank you, Brian. So now that we have a brief overview of what happened, I think it is important to understand, how did we respond? So if it could, Chief Boatwright, you'd come up and talk a little bit about what the ICS is and how it works? Uh, I think this will give us a really good understanding.
Uh, so just introduction, my name is Rick Boatwright. I'm the Operations Chief for the Fire Department. Been here 27 years, been in the current role, going on eight years. So, had several opportunities to work with Incident Command from the very start of our career. This is one of the things that's kind of hammered into us as first responders. This is the framework of how we respond to any type of event, from the smallest, maybe EMS call or citizen, citizen assist call up to the largest scale incident like the 2020 tornadoes. So, we have frameworks that sit in place, what we call by the National Incident Management System, NIMS. Uh, every one of our first responders go through. That's the framework that develops our firefighters, our emergency responders, and how we operate on every type of incident. So we're all speaking the same language. Uh, when we go through these type, uh, incidents, we have different stages, different levels of it. So, you may have a engine company arrive on the scene right off the bat. That company officer will establish an initial Incident Command. They are the ones that are in charge of that incident, that are directing the resources and assessing the scene to see what is needed. Um, as they assess it, they will gather that information, relay it to our dispatch centers. If the incident needs to grow, in the case of the floods this past, our, we were starting to get Incident Commanders in different areas of the city reporting that these floods. Our Battalion Chief then established a centralized command post. What he did from there, he directed those different operations and brought in additional resources to meet the needs of the incidents that were going on throughout the city. So, these resources come in from all over the place. Uh, we had Brainerd, or excuse me, Bradley County, Cleveland, Hound County, Stars. We alerted them through our Tri-State Mutual Aid Association, so. Uh, along with CPD, THP, T-DOT, all of this was coordinated through our EOC. Uh, but the structure expanded to meet the needs. Once we can meet the needs and we had a few, uh, I like to say, "We need as many resources sitting on the bench as we do have playing out in the field." That way we can, you know, if other calls come in, we've got those resources available. We had that at the Brainerd Rec Center, was where we had our staging area. So, the, the system expanded. Once we started meeting all those needs, everything started calming down. We started de-scaling our incident, and the Incident Command System de-scaled to that level. And we started assisting with the shelter events on that. So, just, just the overview, this is the, the framework, the Incident Command System that all of the first responders all across the United States operate under.
Chief, you'll stay at the helm for me and talk a little bit about our agencies and how many, uh, possibly, this is obviously a representation of, of what we, what, what we have responding, but there are others, obviously, that are woven into the fabric of response.
Yeah, so we had, uh, not only the ones you see pictured on the screen, we had Signal Mountain, Red Bank, Bradley County, Cleveland, um, our tri-state partners. Um, I'm trying to think of any others that we had called in. I think that, that was pretty much it. Um, and a lot of these other agencies too, like Bradley and Cleveland, they have swift water rescue teams as well. Um, a lot of you seen the pictures of I-24 where you see the cars swirling around, okay? If you look at the water, it's pretty calm on the top of it. But the current underneath that was being drawn by that drain was enough to move a car around, just like a toy. So you have to have these specialized resources and you have to have that forethought, not, not wait till we need them. Get them, get them coming when you've, you realize you need some assistance.
Very good. Any questions so far, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair members? Okay. Is Chief Chambers available? All right, we're going to go over Chattanooga Police real quick. Uh, Chief Knowles, I know you're in the House.
Yes.
So if you don't mind, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah. So, Chattanooga Fire Department responded incredibly like they always do. So, like Chief Boatwright was talking about, the first captain arrived on the scene that came from Hickory Valley and Lee Highway, Station 8, Captain Bishop, who is actually a swift water team lead on the team, arrived in his apparatus, saw the situation, saw the severity of it, and said, "I need swift water and other units coming." So like Chief Boatwright said, he established command in that area. He started bringing in the resources that he needs. And so it started small, and that's where you're going to grow, just like Chief Boatwright said, and, and making it larger. So he established, he asked for the swift water team and the cache of equipment to make it to Station 13, because that's where he was at, kind of centralized in that Brainerd area. So we got that, all that heading that way. And you can see, within our department, we responded over 100-plus firemen to that area. Trucks from all over the city were going in to help out. With the help of our mutual aid, those other teams Chief Boatwright talked about, the swift water teams coming in from Bradley County, Cleveland, Dallas Bay, and other places came in. They helped us answer over 50-plus rescue calls. And within that, 35 stranded citizens were rescued from houses, on top of cars, inside cars. So that's just what, what we, um, rescued. You saw on the media, civilians and EPB workers and other people pulling people out of the cars that had them out before we even got there. So, thank you. We're just working together as a community to help each other out. And so after the command post was set up, you know, we, we started swift water operations. Our team got there, suited up, grabbed our boats, and went out to the community. And so they were just, it was so sporadic as far as where the rescues were. They were just throwing the boat in the back of a truck, taking it, pulling it out, doing the rescues, picking up, next call comes in, and they were going. So these teams were just moving all over the city wherever it needed. We helped, uh, CPD with emergency evacuations. And then we took, worked with, uh, Community Outreach or Community, um, Division and opened up the, uh, Brainerd Rec Center. And so anybody that we evacuated that needed a place to stay until some people could come pick them up or later on, we took them to the, uh, Brainerd Community Center. And then we block affected, uh, roads to try to prevent people from getting into the high water. And unfortunately, uh, we lost somebody in the East Brainerd area. We had trucks out blocking the road, um, fire trucks. Captain Kristen Smith was there. We could hear her calling on the radio, asking for more units there because she had a whole group of people, about 50 people, that just needed to get across that water. They just didn't know the severity of it. They wanted to get to their truck or get to their car or whatever across. And unfortunately, one gentleman passed by us, ran, and then fell in and, and perished. So, that's what happened, uh, with that. So, uh, of course, we worked with, uh, Community Development and opened that. Communication, and that's the big thing with command and opening the EOC. You know, out there, we need more resources. And so communicating back to the EOC to help us get those resources and also give the information that the media needs, um, and what we need to get out. So our PIO, along with Amy Maxwell, uh, from the county, goes there. We send her all the information that we need. And so, man, they were throwing the information out over and over, quick as possible, to get the correct information out. And as you saw on social media, we just, the media, everything just kept coming out pretty quick and kept us up to date. Uh, we work well. All the agencies, just like in the tornado any of the Mercy has, when it hits, every agency in this county come together. And, uh, even outside counties coming in, we work great together. Uh, the relationship, uh, I heard it say, "We check the eagles at the door." And so, we're a community and that's how we respond to these incidents. Moving forward, lessons learned. Uh, it just shows that the, um, importance of continuing to invest in our specialized rescue teams. Everybody will see today, if they didn't see on social media already, uh, Team Director Patrick Sheehan came down from Nashville and gave our swift water team its accreditation certificate from being accredited. So what that means is that our team not only respond in the city of Chattanooga, it'll respond out in the counties with mutual aid around us. It can respond anywhere in the state of Tennessee, and it can be, respond anywhere in the country. Um, if Tennessee, if Tennessee needs us, they get a call from another state and they say, "We need swift water team." Team can call us. And they know that we have the training, the equipment to respond, and they can send us anywhere in the, in the United States to help out other communities. So, thank you so much.
Chief, that is a fantastic accomplishment for our swift water rescue and, and just in the nick of time.
Absolutely.
Uh, that is, uh, a testament to our investment in our personnel and our equipment, so.
This is, we, we, we had our test, uh, we had our test for accreditation the first of June. And since then, you know, this is our third swift water rescue incident that we've been, uh, sent out on. So, yeah, great job by those guys.
Well done. Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, we're going to move into Department of Public Works, uh, and see if we are able to find Chief Chambers.
I served for me, so he thought he was presenting at council, so he said it this way.
He said it this way? Well, we'll talk slower. Uh, Jeremy, are you, uh, able to join us? Public Works. Is he out here? All right, we'll bring him in. I have to be honest, I didn't know what bluff meant until Jeremy told me. So we added that part in.
I've noticed him use it.
What's that?
I've noticed him use that phrase.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's fascinating to, um, see the protocols that go into place in Public Works and even with the EOC. It's, it's an intricate system that probably people don't think.
EOC meaning Emergency On Call.
Emergency Operating Center.
Operating Center.
And it's, once it goes into effect, it is, it is, it is a multitude of agencies that come together and watching them. And unfortunately, I had a chance to witness that in 2020 with the tornadoes. Uh, Commissioner Shmedley and I were in the EOC. And watching them seamlessly integrate, uh, whether they were city, whether they were county, region. It's fascinating to watch, sitting side by side, working hand in hand. And I cannot underscore the importance of our emergency operations, um, personnel.
What about, um, wastewater or?
Well, I do have Mark Heinzler here. Mark, are you, uh, behind me?
I am.
Why don't you take the helm and we'll, um, we'll go over our wastewater response.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We were fortunate, we were somewhat ready for the events. As you recall, July 4th, Texas, a major rain event, major flooding. So, after that event, we huddled up as a leadership over at Moxon Bend and said, "What do we need to do when this happens to Chattanooga?" Not if, it's when. So we had the opportunity to do that, and so we were ready. We always have 20-plus people that are at the controls 24/7. But on top of that, we always have 25 or so people that are on-call, mechanics, electricians, sewer maintenance folks, to come in and be ready when this happens. So when this rain event was unfolding, we knew they were all gonna be activated throughout the night. And they were, and they did a lot of stuff. So, we had, a lot of the mechanics, electricians were running around at different stations, and we had a collection system going out to look at the overflows. Next slide, Darren. So for the collection system, we had a bunch of folks, we had a lot of calls, came in from all over the place. We responded to each one of those, we had to do some temporary bypass pumping, we had to pump out some different pump stations, we lost power in a few areas. But everything was handled as we expected to be handled by our crews. Next slide. Some operations and maintenance, we had some CSO challenges, we also had some challenges at the plant in our wet weather system where power outages are always a thing when you have a storm, so we were battling a few of those. But again, we were kinda ready for that, we knew that was coming. And then the day after, the biggest thing for us is like, the day after, what do we look like? And our communications to our different pump stations were back up, our power was back on to the different things, our bypasses could be taken offline. We restored ourselves very, very quickly after this, which is really a part of the resiliency that we try to strive for. We know that Mother Nature, we can't build pipes big enough to handle Mother Nature. We had over 11 billion gallons of water fall on the city that day. We treated 230 million gallons at the plant. But there's only so much you can get, you know, to it. So, not all of that, a lot of that's just just rainwater that never comes into our system. But what came into our system was 230 million gallons that we were able to treat, and, you know, and recovered very, very quickly. So right now, it's like, for us, it's kinda like it never happened, with the exception of some construction sites that we're still trying to understand the damage and do an after-action on those. So, that is kind of, that's our report for.
Very good. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, well, I'm just, I just have to come in, because I had the privilege of doing a tour of the wastewater plant on Thursday. It was an hour and a half, I ended up staying like three hours, because it's just that interesting.
It's that much fun.
It is that much fun. And understanding, when I hear now the gallons, and how much we, we, you know, we're helping our community with, I mean, I appreciate your department way more now, after I helped protest it going for four years, first term, but I'm thankful that I went, and now I see the work that you do. So I just appreciate, I appreciate the work that you all are doing out at wastewater.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions?
Councilman?
Is it appropriate to ask questions now, or would you prefer?
I think we have a pause, so if you'd like to, please, sir.
Can you explain, and I've gotten this question quite a bit, Mark, we have these storm drains and whatnot, what caused a lot of the backup?
Water, it's called infiltration, like inflow and infiltration. So we have separate sewer systems in most of the city, where you've got a sanitary sewer pipe, and you've got a stormwater pipe. And they're designed to be separate, they don't touch each other. Except for downtown, they do. But outside of downtown, they're separate. But what happens is, we have an older system, you've got pipes that are 50, 60, 70 years old, and they, they, you know, kinda move and shift over time, and they separate, which allows rainwater to get in. And so when rainwater gets in, it mixes with the sanitary sewer, and we just, we have to treat that. And so it gets into the pipes, and it basically just fills those pipes with stormwater, when we really just want the sanitary wastewater to be in there. So we don't really have a choice. What, part of the consent decree is to rehabilitate a lot of these old pipes, and we're doing that. We've got a million feet of pipe that we're gonna be rehabilitating in the next five years. It's going to reduce this inflow and infiltration quite a bit, and reduce those surcharges on our pump stations, and coming out of the manholes and things like that. So that's all part of the consent decree management of an aging system. We've got 1,200 miles of pipe in the ground, we've got 30,000 manholes, and those manholes leak too. They're, they can be 30 feet deep, and that whole vertical column can get rainwater coming through the bricks and things like that, and just starts to overwhelm the system with the rain of this magnitude.
So what I hear you saying, our pipes were just overloaded with water?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me ask you this, and I've been familiar with this for a while, our pump systems, what role did they play in helping mitigate some of this? And how do you feel like our pump stations performed?
Yeah, they performed very well, with the exception of we had a power outage, which of course, that wasn't about the stormwater per se, it was more about the storm itself, and we're doing an after-action on that to try to figure out what caused that. But when you have a power outage, then you have, then you have an issue, because the water just fills up into that well, and can overflow at that location. But our pump stations, again, that's, we are rehabbing a number of our pump stations, I think we've got six under rehabilitation right now, and we've got a bunch more before the consent decree sunsets in 2030. So, those actually did fairly well throughout this, except for like very few. We have 80 pump stations, I think we went out to five or six that had problems, but the majority of them were performing as intended.
Were any of those pumps, were they all operational?
All but one was operational, yeah. We lost communication on one, but it was still able to do what it was supposed to do until we got back out there and did it. The other one, we lost power and it wasn't.
And that was the one at, was that Harvard, I mean, Brainerd Manor?
Brainerd Manor.
Citico?
Citico was the one that lost power.
Okay, okay. Which was the other one that you lost connection with?
I'm trying to remember, it's probably, I don't know if it's on this slide or the previous slide. Maybe I can move it. I'm sorry, Darren, I'm trying to. No, you're good. Which, yeah, I don't see what. I think it was Storm Station, Storm Station 1, I think was the one that we had to go out and get communications back up online.
Okay.
But I'll verify that, but yeah, it was, it was a communication thing that we.
Was that Storm Station 3?
Oh, there, yes, Storm Station 3, yeah, thank you.
And where's that located?
Storm Station 3 is on the levee adjacent to I-75, right where all of this occurred.
That's the one that wasn't working?
That's the one where the communication was down, but the backup, the radio backup was working, and so it was, that was still functioning.
So it was still functioning?
Yeah.
In your opinion, is there anything that we could've done differently? Or had we had other things in place that could've helped mitigate some of what we experienced?
Yeah, so one of the things that we did look at was, went back and looked at the operations, like, because we control the flow into the plant, into our storage units, into different, you know, pump locations and everything. And so what we did was we looked back at what was happening at the plant, and how we were diverting flow from one phase to the next in the treatment. And we identified some areas where we could've done a little bit better in moving water through a little bit more efficiently. So it's an operational thing that we, you know, a lesson to learn there operationally that we could've done. But it wouldn't have saved, you know, it wouldn't have made a whole lot of difference in the, outside the plant limits at that point in time. So one of the things that we do wanna do, that we haven't done yet, is to look at the Citico pump station and understand, why did the power go out? Is there a root cause there that we need to address? And again, with the communications, we're working on the communications network-wide, and so we don't anticipate, I'd have too many problems with that going forward unless hurt, you know, unless a tornado comes through and takes out everybody's communication, in which case we have backup radios, we've got backup generators and things like that that we employ when those things happen.
Okay. Last question, and please bear with me if this is not a fair question, and I'll take that one. As we look to chip away at this consent decree and make the improvements, do you believe those future improvements could help avoid something like, such as this exacerbating in the future?
Yeah, so one of the things that the consent decree has in it is 45, 40 million gallons of storage for events like this, it's not online yet. Once that's online, we will have greater capacity to kinda weather these types of storms without having the challenges that we have. But we're still two years away from getting that system online. But once that is online, we should see a better overall control over when these things happen. And we still will always have something happen, a pipe will collapse, or something will happen, but it should be much less in magnitude, once those storage units are online, and they're functioning and working with the plant and everything else, we should see, we should be able to handle these types of events more cleanly.
If I ask two more, then I promise.
Okay, I've got two other people in line, and I've got, it's past three. So, one, can you do one? Can you switch into one?
Yes. Were all of our storage facilities full for runoff? Now we have those two new tanks and the two pools.
Yes.
And, long-term planning, is, in your opinion, do you think this highlights a need for additional wastewater treatment facilities, such as what the county has even proposed building themselves?
So we did, we had everything full during this event. We filled up every gallon, every corner we could find, we filled up for this for sure. And so, I guess with, as far as the need for additional wastewater treatment, a big part of the problem is getting the wastewater to the plant from remote areas. And so if you're looking at remote areas in the county that are gonna grow as the city grows, and as the region grows, there may be a need for that at some point in time. The challenge is really getting it from those areas to the plant right now, and so that's kinda what we're working on, is capacity to do that. But there's, there will probably be a need at some point in the future, but I don't know that it's on the doorstep, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Forty billion, 40 million gallons sounds like a lot to you, you hear 11 billion fell. Councilman Henderson.
Well, whenever we do an update for the stadium, I think it would be good to mention the opportunity that we took to capture some of that stormwater that was going to our combined system, and now head straight to the river.
Separating it, that.
I mean, I'm sure that helped tremendously in an event like this, and what I understood, the construction site handled it very well.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear. And any kind of separation we can do for the combined area near the downtown, as new developments come along the river, and get those new developments to do that separation, is huge and provides that extra capacity that is really very helpful. That's the best thing you can get for your buck on those new developments for sure, is to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Good, Councilman? Councilwoman Burris?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm gonna, I've got several pieces of information I wanna ask, where I'm gonna hold them till the end, and just provide that list to Deputy Chair, I mean Deputy Chief.
All right, sounds good. So, thank you very much, Mark. So we've got Public Works, we've got Police, and we've got Community Development.
Administrator Wood is with us, thank you for joining us this afternoon. If you don't mind, Jeremy, take the helm.
Absolutely.
And then I'll start the slide for you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I wanna start this slide off with just the bottom line up front. So the Department of Public Works responded in multiple efforts to include pre, during, and post-event initiatives, and it's been ongoing all of last week, rolling into this week as well. We always remain dedicated and steadfast to the prevention of and in response to any event in the city of Chattanooga and Hamilton County. I say that because we are on-call 24/7. Our team is ready to go, if we're not ready to go, we have people on standby to come in to be ready to go. You can see down there all of our response efforts. On day one, we responded to more than 100 service calls, we had 15 different crews for cleaning catch spaces, our forestry crews were down collecting trees that were blocking roadways, we had multiple barricades out, we were responding to possible evacuation needs with the Ramsey Center. And what, one new thing that we have started doing is, I have an assessment team that I'm trying to push out as soon as we have a storm hit. That gives us time to react to and calculate everything that's happening while it's happening, instead of waiting until it's done and the water disappears. The team is out there absolutely capturing it while it's ongoing. That will help us in the future for any kind of requests that we have for funding, federal funding, things of that sort, for disasters. We have a dedicated cleanup following every event, that's, you'll see it constantly, you've seen the trees in the past and everything else. We're totally committed, we had more than 300 people committed to the second day of recovery operations. And for our shift, we actually had people on shift for 12 hours prior to the event, got called right back onto shift for another six hours, and then 12 hours of recovery. So, almost, well, right at 30 hours of work continuously for that entire team. Next slide. All right, so the, our sequence of events always happens with a pre. We are always trying to get out there before a storm hits, so that we can clear the hotspots that we know are typically flooding or reacting in a negative, in a negative manner. As we get out there, we recognize different things, and the team is constantly trying to pull something or call somebody else to grab something. It is a constant back and forth of being in the pre, transitioning into the during, and then the post. For us, it's one seamless transition continuously. Whenever we get our preventative timelines, we establish who's gonna go in, where they're gonna go, how they're gonna do it, and we release them at that time. We identify the personnel that are on hand, what their competencies are, how they're gonna go into the scenario, and what they're gonna remove. We issue our orders based on the activity, and what the supervisors are comfortable with, and how they can respond. The supervisors detail the action, so we're not micromanaging anything, they detail the action that needs to happen on-site. They go in, they talk to the commander that's on-site, if there is a site commander, if not, they go in and make decisive actions, so that they can start prepping everything and get stuff cleared out of the way. We don't wait for any kind of permissions unless it's actually dealing with power lines. If it's power lines, we remain outside of the affected area, so that nobody gets electrocuted. So that's the one thing that we call and request something else. Everything else, we go right in and start taking, taking control of the action. If there's any kind of change, or if something happens somewhere else and we need to shift our actions, then that's a onsite call that's made at that point, and our teams will be notified by the infrastructure leaders or the site commanders, and we'll shift accordingly. Once we do all that, the crews are constantly talking back and forth to report whatever they're finding, what they see, what it looks like getting in route to that location, and we're always collecting the data at the end, so that we have a constant assessment area. Next slide. So our Stormwater Division, as part of the pre, the Stormwater Division is always looking at the flooding impacts, the maps and different environmental impacts that it has, what, like how they can inspect it or expect it, what levels they look at for the actual size of the event. We have maps that show the flood areas that are already recognized within the city of Chattanooga and Hamilton County, and those are constantly being updated and reviewed. We try to get out early, so that we can close the hotspots, so that nobody's getting into the hotspots, even though people drive around barriers all the time and get in there, and then we have to go in and pull them out of the cars. But we try to get in there beforehand, so that we can actually communicate that it needs to be off limits. We're always doing assessments and looking at the sites for different visits, so retention ponds and things of that sort. We provide a after-event report, which I just pushed up the second day from this last event, so that it could see, it could show the accumulation of water, where the impacts were, and how bad it actually was. This past storm, we recognized as it being between a 200 and 500-year storm. So that's very significant for the amount of rainfall and the infrastructure that we have on-site, not being able to contain all of that. We're always looking at the different problem areas and how we can get better, creating work orders as we're going through there to see exactly what we can and can't do, and then we coordinate everything for damage. And I am open to your questions.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Councilman, do you have any questions?
Quickly, yes, sir. I saw where there was one ditch in my area that was quite grown up, and thank you all for going out and clearing that. But my understanding, it was a business-owned, and there was drain, big massive drains, and so I think it's important that we clarify to business owners, and they help me if I'm wrong here, that it is their responsibility, if it's on their land, to make sure that that is cleaned out and un-destructed. Even though this was not the city-owned property, thank you for fixing that in my district. But am I correct in saying that?
Yes, sir, you are. So businesses and property owners are responsible for the clearing of the ditches unless it's a big obstacle. If it's a large obstacle, then we'll come out and remove it, they just gotta call.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Yes, hi. Thank you for the conversation back and forth just about Bellbor and South Brainerd. I know that there's a lot of issues that still need to be addressed in those neighborhoods. I'm not gonna take up time here, but I would love to maybe, if we get a break either today or maybe sometime in the morning, to talk to you about what we can do. I think there's some things that need to be cleaned up, that may have been part of the cause, not the overall cause, but I wanna talk to you about that offline, so we don't have to do it here. But I just, I appreciate everything y'all have done, and I know, I know you're working hard, and I know a lot of people have a lot of stuff to clean up, so I'd love to figure out how we get. how we get, can get it done and not, you know, kill our staff too, so.
I don't know that hard is even the word for it.
Yeah, well, I'm about to be on, yeah. So I look forward to, to having that conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, we're great, thank you.
Jeremy, thank you.
Appreciate your time and your team's efforts.
So council, we have, uh, running a little low on time. So I do see Chief Chambers here, but I see our interim Administrator Cedric Henson for Community Development. I really want to get this one in as well. Take it away, Cedric.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Council, Cedric Henson. And so the Department of Community Development, well, one thing to note, uh, our primary responsibility is to provide the shelter site uh, in an event like this. Uh, what we're able to do is really require or, or provide that evacuation site, uh, for our constituents. Uh, additionally, we also provide accommodations for emergency responders. If they have to set up an incident command post, uh, we want to be able and to, uh, execute field operations, we do provide that site as well. Uh, so from initial active, uh, from initial notification, we did activate the Chris L. Ramsey Center. Uh, it was a great partnership with American Red Cross, uh, throughout the process, getting those essential resources, uh, to, to our twenty-one evacuees on the first night. Uh, we do, uh, did, you know, accommodate, uh, CFD with, with any, uh, needs that they had in, in reference to standing up, uh, those, uh, that IOC or that, um, command post. Uh, and then from there, really, we continue our operations past the main event. Uh, so post, we, uh, continued to operate at Chris L. Ramsey after the storm had concluded. Uh, we then began, start looking at other sites that we may have to activate as we start hearing that a second storm, uh, could possibly hitting, uh, be hitting the city. Uh, I did call a couple of council members to let them know that, uh, their centers may be the ones, uh, that, that we would use. Uh, so we did identify those. A great shout out to, to John A. Patton, who also, uh, opened up a clothing pantry and we were prepared, uh, as we saw many of our evacuees, uh, came in wet. Uh, and so, you know, clothing was one of the resources needed. So a great job for, for, uh, John A. Patton in assisting with that. Uh, throughout the entire process, one of our great successes was just that, that strong coordination piece. Uh, in between, you know, communicating with CFD, city leadership, uh, we, we were all able to, to send out clear messaging and mobilize our staff as quickly as possible. Uh, we did come across some recent, uh, resource constraints uh, we saw at the onset, onset, uh, because American Red Cross, this was a storm without notice. And so, uh, at the onset, there is some lag time between when AER is gonna show up, or I'm sorry, not AER, uh, ARC, uh, American Red Cross, when they do show up, uh, in, in reference to when we first take in our first, uh, evacuee. And so we're gonna mitigate that moving forward by pre-positioning some, some, uh, uh, boxes that have a lot of those essential resources, uh, in our centers for, for quick mobilization. Uh, other than that, uh, we, we're looking to do, uh, outside of that resource, uh, pre-positioning, I'd like to go to the next slide to be able to show, um, what we're looking at as a opportunity here. Uh, and so I, I will, I'll call this a framework of opportunity. What I really want to capture is how do we begin leveraging other resources throughout the city to kind of converge in on our community centers to give a robust and comprehensive, uh, service and quality of care, uh, for our evacuees. Uh, so simply put, you know, upon, uh, activation, uh, we're, we're gonna give ourselves the problem statement of, you know, how do we provide, uh, these services? Uh, and the, the department will, will work through those. Uh, and we'll really look at it through the lens of a timeline from our IOC, which we're calling our initial operating capability, all the way through our FOC, which we'll, we'll consider our full operating capability. And so at twenty-four hours, we're laser focused on really those life-saving measures. How do we stabilize those people that have been evacuated and come to our, our, uh, centers? Uh, who does that involve? It's American Red Cross, it's, it's, uh, CFD and CPD, uh, really getting those people stabilized in that initial twenty-four hours. And then forty-eight hours into it, how do we start integrating those other services? Uh, not only governmental service, but those non-governmental services like the American Red Cross and, and Tennessee Boad. And then by the time, uh, we are fully operate, at full operation capability, uh, we're really able to say, you know, not only do, do we provide those basic services necessary, but we're also helping with, you know, stabilizing houses and, and, uh, public health services as well as just really pa- providing the pathway of resilience, uh, and continuity for, for our residents that, that come into our centers. Uh, so pending any questions?
I, I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
First, what is the orange one, T-N-V-O-A-D?
Tennessee Boad.
What is that?
And that's the Volunteer Organization of Active Disasters. Uh, and what this team does, it, it is, is listed throughout, it's about forty-six entities, uh, that are incorporated, um, uh, together, uh, in a directory. And they are here, one even showed up, um, uh, to the center. Uh, they all offer different things from crisis, um, crisis counseling, uh, to, uh, pet, keeping pets and, uh, just a lot of different services that they offer. And it's about collaborating what we're looking at. Those, that leads to those non-government entities that we'll, we'll collaborate with to try and get assistance to make it more robust.
Um, thank you very much for, for what you did. As I look at this and hear what you're saying, I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness and the professionalism that you're bringing to this. As I see this diagram though, my, my, uh, instinct would be that the American Red Cross should be in the circle of this and that they're the ones that, that lead disaster response and that we are one of the, we are one of the elements in the hub of people who's all day, every day is disaster response and connecting with, with resources. So like setting people up for long-term success, et cetera, that there are, that, that there are other groups that would be in the hub of this and that we are one of the helpers in that hub. So something for us to discuss.
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you.
That's all. Anybody, I don't think we had anybody else on that one. Thank you very much.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep moving forward. Uh, thank you, Cedric. That was, that was great. Chief Chambers, you want to join us real quick?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, I know you were tied up with a project. So ladies and gentlemen, our chief of police.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Uh, just briefly going over what, what occurred that night. That evening, we started getting an influx of, of calls about water in the roadways. Um, all that led to about four hundred and twenty-seven calls for service regarding flooding or check hazard, or literally people trapped in their vehicles or homes needing, you know, a way out. Um, as, as you would expect, our first responders, you know, responded in kind. Um, they were out there, boots on the ground immediately. Um, and, you know, whatever it took to get folks to safety is, is what they did. Um, we also, once, once we recognized that this was not just a, a, a small event, uh, we went ahead and activated some off-duty resources that, that we know with our special operations unit, our drone unit, things like that, to have those on hand. Um, and then we also brought in some folks to help, you know, early to help with calls for service. Fortunately, we have take-home cars, so that gave us the ability to bring our midnight shift folks straight from their houses. So we, we did not have to have them come into a centralized location, which could have been very difficult to get to. They were able to go straight into their areas that they're assigned and immediately start helping. And that's exactly what we did that night. Um, unfortunately, uh, the next day, that morning, we got a phone call, um, seventy-six hundred block East Brainerd Road, um, which is the same location where our firefighters the night before had observed, uh, a gentleman, uh, forego the warning and, and move into high water. Um, we got a call that there was potentially, uh, this individual was potentially found. Uh, we deployed our drone unit because it's a very, very difficult area to get to. Um, drone unit did identify that this, this, you know, was not, um, debris, this, this was a person. So then we moved forward to secure that scene and, and worked it as a, as a death investigation, notify the next victim. And then from a communications aspect, um, that was, that was, as soon as the EOC, um, was set up for the, you know, county-wide EOC, we were engaged in that constant communication, um, collaborating with the fire departments, PIO's office, to make sure that we're all sending the same message. Um, you know, sending out Facebook posts and everything else that we can, um, to, to be able to update the media. And that's generally what we try to do is we, we send that information to media versus our posts. We have very limited followers compared to thirty-nine and twelve, so we kind of utilize them to, to help push that information out. Uh, as far as areas for improvement, uh, there was some, a little bit of communication early, early on with the EOC, um, what that response was gonna be like. We're, we're having a, a debrief with them later this week to, to kind of get those things ironed out. Um, and then, you know, some, some other notes, we did have two patrol vehicles, uh, that were damaged. One of them was able to be cleaned and salvaged and, and will be reissued. Uh, the other one was a total loss. It, you know, hydrolocked the engine and, um, so it, it was a total loss. And then also, we had several officers that had some, their, you know, their boots, personal equipment, things like that, that was damaged. We're working on getting an assessment of all that so they can be replaced.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Okay, Chief, thank you. Appreciate it. We're gonna, Madam Chair, uh, with your permission, uh, three-one-one had a short, uh, presentation. The data is on the slide. Parks and Risk also had some information, but I, if you're, okay, I'd like to move towards the end because I think the what's next is something that's probably of interest to council. And I'd like to bring, uh, our deputy chief operating officer, Steve Wilson.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. Uh, given the time, I'll go through these quickly. Uh, really, we just wanted to talk about kind of, you know, where, where are we gonna go from here to try to improve, to be better. I think you've already heard a lot of that from the departments that have talked about areas that they can improve. Uh, but the same goes for us at the, at the higher level. Um, you know, when we activate the EOC, someone from the mayor's office goes there. Um, I was, I was there for this incident. Uh, and as I was there, just kind of thinking about, you know, what are we supposed to be doing here? You know, do we have a document that says that? And, uh, and the answer was no, we don't. So we do now. Uh, we've, we've created this, kind of catch a glimpse of checklist there. So, uh, it's kind of defined what the mayor's office representative is supposed to do while at the EOC. Um, we've also talked about the training. I think that was brought up earlier and Chief Boatwright's already put us on a couple of trainings that would be great for us to know. Obviously, fire, police, maybe some others, they know exactly what to do when there's incidents, you know? They live this every day. If they're not in action, they're trained for action. So, uh, it's second nature to them. But when it comes to the rest of us, it's not. So we need to, uh, have some training for the mayor's office staff or the, some of our department leadership to make sure they are ready, uh, when these things occur. So we're looking at training there. Um, after-action meetings, uh, we've already got a couple on the books, one internal, just to talk about things. We've also got one scheduled with the Red Cross to talk about, you know, what worked well and what didn't. So, uh, things of that nature and just communications, making sure those are good and, uh, and really just that continued investment in our emergency services. The last page here is just kind of what we're doing now from a, a perspective of assessing damage. We are actively going out and we're, we're getting info coming in from lots of different departments as to, you know, road damage, infrastructure damage, things of that nature, that the city's gonna have to be on the hook to pay for. We're trying to get, collect all that information. Uh, we're doing that on ourselves for the city. We're also compiling that out to the state because we have, as you know, declared a, a declaration of emergency. Uh, that allows us to potentially get refunded for cost from TMA if we meet a threshold. Uh, and as of today, we don't know if we met that threshold yet, um, but we're still collecting a lot of information. The threshold there is one point six million, as I understand it. Um, one of the things that has come out is Tennessee uses the Survey One Two Three software to load all of their stuff and to manage the TMA process. Hamilton County Emergency Management also uses that software, which means they can load and interact directly with the state. We are not using that software. So that's an opportunity we would like to look at in the future. Um, and the bottom part here, the dark blue, is something I put here because this is kind of important for you, I think, as council people. If you are getting phone calls from a resident that says, "Hey, my house is flooded. What do I do?", they can call this number, which is our land development office, and someone from Stormwater will come out and do an assessment. They can also email Hamilton, T-N dot gov, and somebody from the emergency management office will come out and do an assessment. Um, and beyond that, obviously, contact their insurance company. I know a lot of people don't have flood insurance, but that's the good place to start is by reaching out to their insurance companies. So that's.
Thank you.
Very good. Steve, Madam Chair, oh, sorry. No, go ahead. Go, make your comment and I'll. I was gonna have one more slide and then I know we have a three-thirty.
Um, let's let Councilwoman Burris please answer.
Um, I just wanna, I wanna, I have a list of the pieces of information that I'd like to get post-meeting. So I don't know if your last slide's gonna address that, so I'm happy to wait. Okay. All right. Um, so I'm, I'm interested, uh, I've got two neighborhoods in my district, uh, Belvoir and South Brainerd, that are still in dire straits. They have a lot of, which I've mentioned, I'll get with, uh, Jeremy to talk about cleanup procedures. Something I think that we can, if we can come up with a plan to just show up one day with a lot of trucks, get the stuff, because I think it's gonna, it's gonna speak volumes for helping them heal along, there's probably other communities that are in the same position, but I'm, you know, my district. I, I'd also be interested in more information about, from TDOT because I'm getting a lot of questions. Both of those neighborhoods, uh, are parallel to the TDOT construction. And I think that their immediate, their initial response was not acceptable. I think there needs to be more information as to what happened and what's the, the plan forward should this happen again. Um, I'm also interested in, and I think, Steve, you kind of answered this, but I want to confirm the process to have FEMA or TMA, uh, folks come out and assess damage because they're showing up in neighborhoods, but not because people have called them, they're just showing up. So I want to make sure people don't get missed. I've told them that they need to turn the information into our council clerk, but maybe we need to direct them here instead. So I just want some verification of the most direct place for them to, um, to, to contact, to make sure that they don't miss this opportunity if they meet the requirement. And I think if everybody in Belvoir and South Brainerd reports it, we will definitely meet that one point six million. I, I feel confident in that along with everybody else's. Um, and then I'd like to hear more, and this can come from my conversation with, uh, Jeremy hopefully in Stormwater, is, um, addressing some of the debris issues I think that were noticed once the water cleared, that it are gonna need to be cleaned up. Because I don't see anything in an after-action plan as far as, uh, cleaning up in the public places. So public spaces that have a lot of backed-up debris that aren't necessarily gonna be called in by a resident from three-one-one. What's the plan to address that debris? Because I've got pictures that people have sent me from public spaces where trees and grocery carts and other things are across the road that got, that are stuck in sewage drains now. So we need to address those for the next episode.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm happy to connect with you on break, sorry.
Yeah, and whoever it is, I can put this list together and those are my items. Thank you.
It's really quickly.
It is three-twenty-eight, so I'm gonna let you ask it after we head out.
Oh, no, I don't, just to clarify for Councilwoman Burris, everybody who's sending stuff to our council office is going to the direct point of contact with emergency management.
Okay.
And we have confirmation.
We are, thank you very much.
Thank you.